Okay.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the first committee of the whole meeting of 2014, and we wish everyone a very happy and healthy new year. The, this meeting will be the first one that we've held on Granicus so that you can watch this on the webcasting today. It's usually just the meetings in the afternoon that are on Granicus, and this will not be on Channel 18, though. This, only the afternoon meeting will be. So, Counselor Ryan is away today with family. He will not be joining us, but we do have Mayor Wells on the line from Palm Springs, where we understand it's 28 degrees. So, welcome, Mayor Wells.
Hi, everybody. Best of the year.
Yes, thank you. So, I'm calling the meeting to order. This is January the 20th, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. in council chambers. And the first thing that we have is the introduction of late items. Are there any late items? Hearing none. Could we have the agenda adopted by consensus? Thank you. And we do not have any delegations today, and our first business is the Spartan Drive turnaround, and Mr. Doucette is going to speak to this. This was a, there were two options that were considered at the end of Spartan Drive. Council agreed to one of them, and then staff sent out a neighborhood information pamphlet to the residents, and several of the residents were quite concerned about it and wrote letters and sent emails in. And Mr. Doucette visited many of the people down there, and we now have come up with a couple of different plans, so I'll let Mr. Doucette tell us about that.
All right. Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank not only the people in attendance, but also the other people that did comment on this, and they had some very valid concerns, and mainly how you presented. It was a very, you know, it was not hostile whatsoever. They're very pleasant to deal with, and, and like I say, that's where we're at. Like you did mention, there was two options back in the 2013 budget, and once we received not only the concerns from the citizens, but also a report from our engineering staff and everything, that having the cul-de-sac somewhat in the middle of the, of the road is probably not, not our, our best option. So what we've done is, is we've looked at others. We actually even contacted the property owner at the far end, Mr. Eiffel, and then, like I said, there's two properties there. And he was very cooperative in giving us an option as well to utilize their, his land until, until he sells it or whatever the case is. So, you will see that that is one of our options. What we've done is concentrated, obviously, at, at the end of, of the cul-de-sac, where that's usually where the turnaround should be. We came up with basically four options, two on the Eiffel property and two on our own property. Not to the extent of option one that was originally, originally brought forward to council that included not only costly but tall walls because of the, the area where it's at. And the reason we, we tried to move the, and that was, it was a dollar value for sure, the landscaping or the area in the middle of the thing was a lot flatter and a lot easier to do. However, again, like I say, it does impact a lot of the, of the properties that are there and also the future properties that may have access problems in the future if we, if we sort of do it in this area. So I guess our, our point of view as far as public works is, moving to the end of the cul-de-sac is, is probably our, our best option, and, and how we're going to deal with that is, again, is, is up to the council, how you want us to deal with it. We do have, you have the cost in front of you for, for, for two different ones. One is, is for, for cars and half-ton, and the other one is for a single axle, turn, basically hammerheads. I don't believe at this point that those, regardless if you go to the bigger one, that it will accommodate either a garbage truck or a fire department. These trucks are just too big. But the thing is, is at this point is, is we should be looking at one of those two options. Other than that, like I say, for us at this point is, is where do you want to go next? It's up to council, too. You've got the six options there where the middle is still there. However, looking at, like I said, the comments and concerns of everyone on that street, it may, might be an idea to, not that I want to change your mind, it's, it's your decision, but where, my question is, where would you like to, for, for me to go next? Just for, you know, get further details on everything else, although we got some pretty good details here, and then where we, where we want to go next.
Yes, thank you very much. My, I guess one of the concerns that I had was that the, even with the larger hammerhead turnaround, you might not be able to accommodate a truck and a boat or a large truck on there. So, is the idea to put some signage up there as well to say that you could, we would not...
Yeah, the biggest, I think that we do have signage right at where the one-way starts, but I, I think what we have to concentrate on is we do have a sign at the corner of 92nd and 87th. That's, it's, it's like a book. Maybe it's too big. So I, I think that's, we have to concentrate on that. Put some no through row, no turnarounds at that area, and that hopefully will, will divert people down 87th rather than down 92nd and then get stuck wherever we're at. So, there's no doubt that will be an option also. Not an option, that's something that we will, we will be doing, probably sooner than later.
Thank you. We do have some, some maps here that are included, and I assume that they would be on, on the, the board behind you. Would you be able to just point out the options on there and for people that are watching?
Yep.
Because we do have some people
You bet.
in the audience today that might be interested in this. They are homeowners down there.
The one that you see here is, is this would be on, on, on private property. This is the property owners that read at the end, and again, it's, it's a hammerhead, where, like I say, two, two different sizes to accommodate two different types of vehicles. The idea here was to also fence the area with a gate to protect Mr. Eiffel's property also from, like I say, that property, the buildings are empty and then it's to, you know, protect from unwanted people getting to him, sort of thing. So according to, like I say, Mr. Eiffel was a win-win situation. Again, like I said, there's two property owners, so, and we spoke to one. So like I said, at this point, there's nothing obviously confirmed with this. And again, like I say, the size of it is just to accommodate different vehicles. The other one...
It's one more. Yeah.
All right. So this, this one here is, is at, is at the end, again, at the end of the, of Spartan, but on our own properties. As you can see, in either both options, we need a little bit of a wall. Not like option one of the first time, but it is still, because of the lay of the land, we still need a, a small retaining wall to accommodate this turnaround. And again, we have, I guess, two options as far as size of vehicles. There's the same spot except just a little deeper, a little, and then the wall has to be a little higher to accommodate the, the vehicles that you can see here. So basically, the, the four, those are the, basically, four new options that you have. Two on the, on the, the private property and two on our property.
Thank you. Would anyone, Counselor Rhodes, Counselor Plante, like to comment on this?
If I could just, oh, sorry.
Oh, Mr. Ramanko, please.
Just kind of provide some little broader context that certainly the, the, the projects vary in, in the sense that we have investment on our own property versus investment on private property. And maybe just, Alana, a quick question here. Should, should the properties at the end go to development? We're still looking at the need, like a, it's, it'll still be a dead end to the area, right? So...
Yeah. The Eiffel properties are the last ones.
You want to get, your mic has to be on.
The Eiffel properties are the last ones at the end of the road, and they have a very tight situation. First of all, the properties are very narrow, and then, of course, since they were created, we have riparian area regulations to deal with. So, development, all those properties would be quite challenging, but I have met with the owner a couple of times and said that we will be prepared to be very creative in terms of applying zoning and subdivision regulations to come up with what could be quite a unique solution to, to the development. But I guess the point, point of that is that anything that's decided with respect to resolving the situation by using part of the Eiffel lands should take into consideration the overall development potentials and possibilities for, for the land, so that we don't do something twice, and that's compatible with the, the development options that, that the property owners may have.
So that's part of the, I guess, the consideration is that, you know, if we're looking at making a public investment here, that the, the question is, do we, do we look at maybe a potential temporary investment onto the Eiffel property, and then you're still dealing with, with the problem in the long term, because there, there is no need for public access to, to those properties, because there'll be private property development, unless it's a larger type of resort or something like that that's developed?
Thank you. There is a true consulting memorandum included in this package, and Mr. Underwood has looked at all of the six options, and his recommendation is the hammerhead adjacent to the end, which is on drawing C6, which I believe is the one that's showing right now. So, Mr. Counselor Rhodes.
Oh, thank you. I guess I would have to, you know, just, just so that we're clear on, you know, how, this particular counselor feels about it, and I'm not really all that keen on doing a temporary thing on somebody else's property. That off, it worries me an awful lot. You know, we do have to have a vision of the future and where we're going and, and that kind of thing, and I'd hate to just kind of defer this, this circumstance and pass it on to a future group of counselors if that property does get sold and/or developed in the future. I know it's a, a very generous offer, and, and, you know, perhaps we could tie it up by some kind of long-term agreement, but it's not a, it's not the real solution. I'd rather work towards something that works for everybody down there. I know we have a very similar situation on Osprey Road. It's almost absolutely identical there. The road terminates right in a private driveway and that kind of thing, and we've, we've kind of mitigated, you know, the, the conflict in that particular area by some fairly good, strong signage at the beginning that discourages people from going down there, other than local residents and their guests and that kind of thing. And I'm just wondering if sometimes, you know, these, these projects, when we, when we head off on them, it's also important the possibility of doing nothing as well at this time, and, and sometimes I kind of like that, you know, it, you know, but we definitely need to improve the signage at the beginning of that road that discourages people from going down there, irrespective of what we do finally in that area down there. You know, any kind of a hammerhead or, or cul-de-sac ending down there, we still need to do something to deter regular traffic down there, because at the end of the day, it's a dead-end road. I mean, that has to be our top priority. So, you know, do we have any traffic count statistics down there? I know, I know the reason why we're doing this, it's being driven by the property damage that, that's occurred down there, but do we have any idea what traffic counts? Is it large, small, or...
That you'd have to ask the residents. We didn't, we, we do have a traffic count machine, but we haven't put it that, that area. And I know there's a, like, a lot of the people there are also, like, you know, just summer, they come for the summer and stuff, but that's, that's irrelevant as far as I'm concerned. And also, another thing you have to look at is the, the wall, let's say, for example, you go to C6, the, the, either one, the short one or the long one, and then eventually we'll go to the, the major, those blocks will be reused. So it's not as, you know, it's, it's an investment that will be able to reuse later, you know? And like I say, I, I tend to, to agree with, with true as far as the, at least have a, the, the small portion of, of the, the drawing C6. At least have the vehicles and cars and at least half-tons, any other vehicle have to back up no matter what, you know? So, like I say, and you're right, we need better signage up there, both at 92nd. There is some signs, like I said, but it's too late by the time they get to that, that corner, they're, they're hooped, because they can't go in the one-way. So, the key is to concentrate on 92nd and 87th, and I think that's where we have to really, signage-wise.
Thank you.
I'll wait in if I, if I...
Oh, please, please do, Mayor Wells.
Um, yeah, just a, just a couple of comments. I don't think we should be going on any private property on a temporary basis, that sort of, that doesn't, that doesn't really make sense to be spending that kind of money. I think I would like to see us do it, sort of do it right the first time, and I, I know it's restrictive and, and sort of, I'm, you know, like the, the expensive one at the $70,000 and major work, I don't know that, I don't think that's the right one either. But, um, so I guess, I guess I'd be looking at something along, along number, number six, I believe it was. I'll have to go back here.
Yes, number six is the hammerhead with the, with, that accommodates the larger trucks.
Yeah, the larger trucks, and, and again, the, the key to the, to the whole area is there shouldn't be anyone down there other than, other than residents, and it's important that the signage indicate that. And up at, up at 92nd, I think it needs 92nd and 87, up at the top of the hill, I think it needs strong signage, like a big stop, local traffic only. Like, it really has to be strong language and very easily understood. There's no access, there's no access to, to Lyons Park, and there's no access to town. So, so it just has to be local traffic only for, for that whole area. You know, we've, we've had previous issues with, with some of the safety issues with 92nd. So that, that whole area should only be for local traffic. You know, there, there may be, there may be a different opportunity of turnaround if, if that whole Y area ever gets developed, you know? There may be something to, to relieve some of it there. But as it is right now, it's, it's signage and language, and let's make sure that we get it right for the folks that live down there on Spartan, so it's not an inconvenience to them.
Thank you. So, Mr. Doucette, you are looking at some sort of direction from council on how to proceed with this?
Yes.
It, yes.
Maybe I can just provide as, as a summary of maybe some of the, the type of direction we're looking for. Because it was an approved budget item, we, we had 20, $21,000, $22,000 in last year's budget. So, we're looking now to say, okay, how do we narrow the scope of what some of the, the proposals we'll put in the budget? So, from what I was hearing at council, there's no real want, desire to go back to the $70,000 project. We can take the options out of, of going into the center, and, and then we can also take the, the options out of going on private lands. So, we can build scenarios within the budget for either options, the, the car option or the truck option to work around in our budget process. And, and then council, in the budget deliberations, can focus on which would be the, the most desired, unless there is a strong desire by council to provide a direction now to say, this is the one we want into the budget so we can work around it. Again, the option being, as, as Counselor Rhodes says, to do nothing and also to work with signage. Let's keep this in our, our pocket and, you know, try the signage, see how it works before an investment of $25,000 to $50,000.
So the, so what I'm, what I'm hearing from this is that we look at in the budget process either option five or option six, and those would be the two prop, town property turnarounds, and we, we look at that when we do the budget process, which is in a week or so, right? Two weeks.
That's right. And, and so, we could have them both built into the budget, and council can make their decision of one, either one of these projects or
Signage.
the third being to, to just work with the signage. But I think what it does is it sends a message to the residents that the, the most feared option of something in the center is not on, not an option that council wants to consider anymore.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you again. Just, just for, I know I'm repeating myself, but just for effect, is there anything that we could do that's very quick regarding the signage? I'm just kind of, kind of thinking that everybody seems to feel that the signage is where we're, where we want to start with, and, and I'm just wondering, because we do have a little bit of budget money, can we develop that right away?
Definitely, yes.
Is there anything we can do to, to speed that up rather than...
Ron and I have talked about that already
Yeah, okay.
in terms of proceeding with that, and both with a strong message at the, at 92nd and also another strong message at the, you know, right at the Spartan Drive turnoff there. Again, my understanding is some of that traffic at least is traffic that illegally uses that property, so that, that would naturally wouldn't stop that traffic.
Yes.
And also, the one property owner that, that's the recipient of some damage down there, is there anything that we can do to, you know, temporarily to mitigate that situation there?
Well, probably the only one would be, like I say, even the, the small car one. Like John, Mr., yeah, he was, he was very cooperative as well, like I say, and he's willing to do anything, obviously, to try to protect his property. But, yeah, I, I think if we do some type of little turnaround or some type, so if somebody does end up there, like a truck or, or a car, at least they have a little bit of an area to back up a little bit and not go on, on his property.
Yeah. And I know Brayburn has, you know, a fairly, a fairly good cul-de-sac arrangement in there for, for turnaround as well. I don't know if we want to direct anything down there, but certainly I think the local traffic thing on 87th and, and 92nd on the corner will certainly, you know, not eliminate traffic down there, but discourage a lot of people, or just random drivers down there.
I have a couple more comments, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I, I think that something has to be done. I don't, I don't think we should just leave it because you, no matter what we do in the way of signage, we must look at the human component into this and realize that there will end up with, you will end up with a truck down there. And, you know, they, there is, there is that possibility that, and it has happened in the past, of, of damage. So I, I think we have to, have to look ahead, look at, at moving this ahead in some fashion. And I don't see any report from the fire department. I wish, I, I'd just like to see something from the fire chief and as a part of, as a part of the reporting out. I know in some of the other areas where we've ended up in hammerheads and stuff like that, they like to have some input into there, so if we could get something from the fire department, I'd like to see that, please.
Actually, I went to see the fire chief this morning. He was going to take me down here. Unfortunately, I was running out of time, so I did try to contact him and, and, yes, like I say, we, that would, that would be a good idea to follow up on that as well.
Thank you. Before the budget meeting, we could have...
Definitely, yeah. Well, I'll take Rick down, and we'll have a better look at it and see what we can do here.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Plante?
Well, actually, Mayor Wells was reading my mind. It's exactly what I was going to say, is that, you know, as much as we can put signs up, there are going to be people that go through there, so we do have to have an option down there, I think. And that was all I was going to say, but Mr. Wells caught, caught me in that one, so there you go.
Good. So every, it, it looks like we're all sort of on the same page here. We'd like to look at signage and perhaps doing something down there, and it will definitely be brought up again at the budget meeting. That is okay with everybody? Okay. Thank you. The next item that we have on the agenda is the report from the food vendor selection and approval policy, and that would be Mr. Cunningham. Thank you, Mr. Doucette.
My pleasure. Okay. So this is the report number two on, on this subject matter, and the purpose of this report is to invite council discussion on the attached street vendor food selection and approval policy prior to submission for final approval at the regular council meeting on February 3rd. Our current dealings with street food vendors are very ad hoc, with prospective vendors coming into our office on multiple occasions with new inquiries or new information, and not infrequently changing their plans midstream or closing up their business... Sorry. Or, or changing their plans midstream or closing up their business in the Soyuz after opening for a while. All this places heavy work demands on staff for what in the end is a very small number of quality vendors who actually open and stay open, and stay open for business, and which fails to realize the full potential for serving the Soyuz market. A new focused approach is needed to competitively attract and select quality food vendors who can commit long-term to serve the resident tourist market in the Soyuz with good service and attractive equipment. Staff first took their proposed new approach to council on, on August 19, 213, and received favorable feedback. The attached policy builds on what we proposed earlier and incorporates the following components: one quota system. Staff is requesting council to set maximum competitive quotas, quotas for food vending sites in each of the following categories. And these are: A: stationary park vendor. Example being Beach Bum Lunchbox, closed after one year in 212, also juice open in 213, and will probably want to renew. It is noted that our business license bylaw also allows additional vendors to operate in parks without licenses during special event days, and that's handled through community services. B: stationary liquor establishment vendor. E.G. Doggnet, closed in 208 after four years at the Sage Pub. C: stationary downtown vendor. E.G. Chip Ahoyas, open in 209 but left after a few months. They Habarenas also stayed open, only stayed open for a few weeks in 213 after opening late. And D: mobile street vendor. E.G. Soyuz Ice Cream Parlor, canceled after three seasons. Rolling Stones, open in 213 and will probably want to renew. It is, it is anticipated that the quota system will attract new interest amongst serious food vendors about the Soyuz marketplace while ensuring that their numbers do not overly compete with our fixed proof restaurants. For discussion purposes, staff suggests a maximum starting quota of two available sites in each category, with the option of revising in future years based on experience and changing demand. Council will probably want to give special attention to the downtown quota, given the resident or feedback received last year, but staff is proposing an important change they may wish to consider whereby vendors would only operate out of public parking spaces off Main Street, as they do in Penticton, instead of from downtown private properties, which has had its problems. Second component: invitations for expressions of interest, EEOI. Following council approval of the new street food vendor policy, the town will run two promotional advertisements, each in the Soyuz Times and the Penticton Herald, inviting interested vendors to competitively submit... vendors to competitively submit E.O.I.'s for available quota sites before a set closing date. The advertisement will be, will also be posted on our website and personal notices sent to all vendors who operated through last year's season. To promote competition, diversity, and keep our opportunities open for local businesses, prospective developers, vendors can only apply in one quota category and for one site. They will also have to provide sufficient supporting information to enable staff and council to appraise their proposal against selection criteria laid out in the proposed policy, which is based on an Ottawa city model. This competitive procedure shall help promote quality vendors and glean out less serious operators. Component three, application selection approval. Staff will rate all vendor submissions against the selection criteria and recommend shortlisted candidates to council up to the quota maximum. All vendors will be advised of council's decisions or choices and shortlisted candidates invited to submit a business application with required supporting information. And that would include a health permit, C.S.A.B.C. Safety Authority certification, insurance, and fees. If council agrees, applicants could apply for annual extensions of the licenses up to five years. The options are: council directs staff to bring back street food vendor selection approval policy three eleven-one for approval by resolution at the regular meeting on February 3rd. Council requests revisions before considering approval on that date or three do not take any actions. And I've set out quite a number of impacts from this proposal. I'm not going to read out all of them, but I would like to point out that under C organizational, we will focus our staff resources a lot better in dealing with the, with the vendors. We expect there would be a spike in, in the amount of time which we would have to put in this year, but once we have the system running, we expect that in fact that will be greatly diminished in following years. Timeline, so you can see that we're getting off to hopefully a good start right at the beginning and so that the, the vendors have enough certainty in terms of opening their operations in plenty of time before the summer season. Recommendations: staff recommends that council selects either option one or two. I'm not going to read out the actual proposed policy itself. It follows quite closely to what I've just discussed. What I would like to point out to you, the, the assessment table that's in there, which is, is adapted from the one that used in, in Ottawa. And so it has a number of criteria which we'd be using to, to compare different vendor applications. There's four components of that, each with a maximum points of twenty-five. One would include a business plan describing how long they're going to be staying open for and what their business intentions are over the long term. Second, their qualifications and experiences. Third, the unit design. And fourth, very interesting, and there's been discussion around the table, and that's before their menu diversity. So I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cunningham. I think that you've done quite a lot of work at looking at this policy. I particularly like the different categories of, of vendor and the different areas and the, the criteria. I think those are, that's a good way to proceed with people who do show an interest. So is there anyone who would like to comment on this?
Could I just add?
Absolutely.
I think it's, I think it's important that council recognize there's a, there's a very specific change in, in, or a perspective on, on this whole policy. And council normally does not approve business licenses. You don't get into the, if a restaurant's going to open in town, you don't select the menu that they in fact are going to choose and, but in this particular case, council's wading into an area that is fraught with danger, I would say. But at the same time, there's a recognition that you are allowing a lease on public properties. So there's, 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 or a license of occupation on public property. So that's where the difference is. The, the question becomes, do you want to be only involved in the leasing or licensing of that particular space, or do you want to get involved in all the other choices? And that, that is a, you know, a real question that council has to, has to take a look at as well when, when they look at this particular policy. Because the way the policy is built right now, council is involved in the licensing of the space, they're also involved in selecting the business. And the criteria that exists right now, there is the option that, that would allow the staff to make the decision on which business is chosen based on the criteria. And that way council isn't involved in the actual licensing of the business, but they are involved in the leasing of the property or the licensing of the property. Is, is that fair?
No, that's absolutely the case. And I chose one route deliberately because there has been a bit of controversy about these units in the past, and I thought it's something that, that council would like to have some involvement in. But as CEO has very clearly enunciated, there's a clear choice here that if you preferred, and certainly staff will be prepared to take on this burden, we could go through the whole screening policy ourselves and rate them and approve, approve them for, for locating different locations within the town. And then council's involvement would be restricted to those situations where in fact they would be leasing town land, and your approval would be required for, for that. And if you go with the other option, it would only be required for that particular function, not the rest of it. But it's up to you how you wish to proceed. Very two clear options there.
Yes, thank you for that. I guess one of the things that concerned me on the, on the policy was the menu diversity, and I realize it's probably not something we want to get into, but I think that was one of the things that was pointed out by the restaurateurs when we did the survey last year. They were concerned that maybe some of the people who had mobile vendors or mobile food things were, were offering similar products. And I think we need to, whether we do it or you do it, I think that needs to be something that is looked at.
Yeah, I think it should be unique enough that it's not directly competing against an existing fixed roof restaurant. And I believe that the argument that was made by restaurateurs was that they pay, you know, heavy taxes, they're open the whole year, they've got a stronger commitment to, to the community, and, and that should be recognized.
So, Mr. Remanko, are you suggesting that, that we look at a different option then, not option one or option two?
I'm just providing the, the insights into the policy and to council that there are, there are options of council or levels of council involvement in the process and just making council aware that, that the policy was struck like this because of previous discussions. However, there are options that are available to you.
I'd like to have some canvassing around the table as to which of those options you would prefer.
Uh, Council Rhodes.
Uh, thank you. So when we waded into this water last year and we did receive some fairly creditable pushback on, on the direction that we were heading at that time. But I have always been a, a, a strong believer in, in the food culture in a community. And so often your food culture is, is determined by the marketplace. And you open up a restaurant or, or something that, you know, is in that food vending genre, you know, you're going to be successful by the diversity and, and being, you know, looking at what people want and what you're offering and bringing that marriage together determines the success of restaurants and all food vendors and, and all communities. And these so-called mobile vendors or food trucks or whatever you want to call them are incredibly successful in, in so many communities across Canada and North America and all around the world. Because it's part of the culture that you have. So where I'm kind of heading right now, and I know you're looking for opinions on it, I'm, I'm kind of keen on backing out of this, this situation altogether and, and letting the marketplace determine where menus go and what they do. And, and, you know, I, I'm not, you know, I mean, I like to eat food, of course. I mean, but, you know, I'm not about to go around saying that an individual vendor should have this type of food. And I think those kind of decisions are much better left to, you know, you and your staff. You know, you're probably more qualified to do that kind of thing. And I was kind of, when I read this report over, I was kind of wondering how we were going to get into that area. So thank you very much, Mr. Remanko, for bringing that up. I appreciate it. And that's kind of the direction that, that I feel that we should head in, and I know you're looking for opinions, so that would be mine.
I'm certainly prepared to take it on, on the basis that they have to provide samples of their food in the occasion.
Sounds like a good idea.
Right.
Would you like to?
Yes. Yes. For me, I, I am also, I feel the same. I think the criteria should be set as far as how we, how we accept it, and we should leave those decisions to staff according to criteria set and, and come to us as far as the town, as Mr. Remanko has said, the necessity of town property. If that's, if that's, that's our own decision, it should be. I, I don't want to get into menus. So I, I believe that that should be it. We set the criteria as far as how we accept these vendors, and we leave that to our staff to make those decisions.
Good. Mayor Wells, would you like to say anything on this issue?
Well, it's always these, it's always these apparent, simple-looking issues that have the underlying dangers and troubles to them. Um, you know, that's, the, the whole, the whole issue gets into a saturation situation. And I know following some of the issues in Vancouver, starting to see backlash there from, from some of the brick and mortar restaurants about, about some of the, the food vendors as they increase their numbers every year. And I think we have to be cautious of that. And it's sort of like these businesses that are happening around these pop-up businesses, these spring-ups and pop-ups, and, you know, they, they, they open up, they're there for four months, and they close down. And, and my first experience with it was, was at a, a costume place in Clona. And I was up there and talking to the owner-operator of a bricks and mortar business, and she was talking about pop-ups, and I really didn't even understand them at that time. She said, "Well, a pop-up, they'll come up at Halloween and open up for a month and put out all these costumes and that, and then they're gone." And she said, "And I'm here year-round." And I think we have to be aware that, that that's, that's going on in that business community. And, you know, everyone would have a differing opinion of it. But I think we, we have to look at, we have to just be aware of, of strong support for, for our bricks and mortar quote marks, Main Street merchant and, and some of, some of their issues up there. And to that end, I'm glad to see that we, that we moved away from what's happening on private property because we could see that there was certainly going to be some, some not very positive results if, if that had continued. So I like where we're going with the policy. I don't think council should be involved in, in that menus, but by the same token, there, there needs to be an awareness. You know, we, we have a, a bricks and mortar off, offering Indian cuisine, and then what happens if we get a street vendor that offers that? You know, within, within sort of a same block area and that. So there's, you certainly, certainly have to be aware of these issues and the impact they have on, on our current businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and I certainly agree with, with everything that has been said by, by the mayor and the other councillors. So are you okay with that, Mr. Cunningham?
I just need one other piece of feedback before I have my marching orders to make reservations and come back, make the changes and come back to the next meeting. And that is the idea of, of a five-year license. I am pretty enthused about that. I think that it would buy in a lot of support from some of the vendors and give them the kind of security that I think some of them need to invest what is sometimes quite, quite a large amount of money into their equipment and know that they're going to be able to come back to the same spot, you know, year after year in Soias. I think some of them would really value that kind of commitment.
Uh, Council Plante?
Yeah, and to that would be the other direction as well. It creates insecurity for us that there will be someone here for five years, they're not popping up, and then deciding to leave the following year. So I, I think I would be in agreeance to that. I just wanted to say one thing about the type of client we're talking about here as far as the, the person that goes into a restaurant versus the person that may be on the beach or just heading down the sidewalk or has limited time. And, and so that's the difference between the two clients. I, I keep, you know, I don't think it's going to deter people from going into our restaurants to sit down for an hour and a half or two hours. What the vendor does is allows us for the different types of clientele that come through here that are maybe doing some window shopping downtown, that can stop, grab a, a good piece of meal and actually wander, wander our town, and, and again, spending money in our economy and looking at all those things. So those are two different types of clientele. So every time we talk about this, we bring that up, but I, I still think they can work together in conjunction with each other. So I just wanted to bring that up because I know we always talk about how it will affect the restaurants, but I still think of those as two different types of clients.
Thank you. Mr. Remanko.
Thank you. I think Mayor Wells has brought up a good point that, that we probably can consider in the policy, and that's some type of guideline on, or restriction on distance from a similar type of, of business. You know, you, like, giving example, some bylaws are, are written, you know, no liquor stores or such and such a type of business with a next number of meters from a school. And this would prevent somebody from wanting to, you know, for example, lease two parking stalls in front of an existing restaurateur that is very, very successful when, when we have it within our, within our policy that says you cannot set up within X number of feet of a, of a similar type of restaurant or, or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And it's actually already written down under, under that role in menu diversity, a sort of a non-compete provision is what I call it, just for shorthand. So, yeah, we'll put something in there that it shouldn't be within so many feet of, of an existing restaurant with respect to offering the same type of menu, I think is what the point was made.
Thank you. Council Rhodes.
Uh, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm definitely a free enterprise person, but I can see the benefit of offering some of those controls with it. And I'm definitely in favor of the five-year plan. I think it's mandatory for us to, to develop and nurture relationships with these, these types of vendors and certainly within a year scope. It's pretty hard to do. And if it helps people out and we get, you know, a diversity and develop a food cult, culture and nurture that over a longer period of time, I'm definitely in favor of that.
And, and closing perhaps, I just wanted to emphasize for, for the public that we weren't just talking about regulating developments. We also wanted to promote these kind of vendors. There's, I think, a fairly under-exploited sector of our tourist industry at present. And if you look at what other places are doing, I think we need to get on the bandwagon and ensure that we've got the conditions in place that we give a helping hand to business to create, you know, more, more diversity, to be more secure, stay, stay longer working here, come back year after year after year. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Cunningham, do you have enough information from that? That you can come back to the February 3rd meeting for a resolution of some kind?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next thing on our agenda is the land, uh, lakefront landscaping projects. And I believe that's Mr. Cunningham as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and I presume everybody got all their packages and were able to download or get into them? Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, this is report number two on lakefront landscaping projects. Outline design has forwarded our latest graphics and cost estimates for our proposed lakefront landscaping projects, which can be accessed respectfully through the following cyberlinks in your agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to provide council the opportunity to review Outland's work before they present it at a public open house proposed for Thursday, February 6. Immediately following the open house, council will be asked to confirm projects and budgets ready for the consultants to start tendering. Council approved retaining Outland design at their meeting on October 7 to 13 to deliver all landscaping projects through design, tendering, and construction supervision. This reduces demands on staff and engineering services, improves continuity, and will result in a professional quality product. The work has been coordinated through close liaison between the consultants and the director, who reports to the Waterfront Steering Committee, WSC. And now, just get into the actual projects themselves. First of all, the Jaro Park multipurpose plaza. The plaza project is one of the priorities identified in the Jaro Park Plan prepared through a charrette stakeholder process and endorsed by council for implementation on a project-by-project basis. The attached plaza graphic was prepared by the consultants in consultation with the WSC committee and consideration of alternative layouts. Its features include a large gathering area with concrete pavers in a decorative pattern to replace the current parking lot instead of the originally proposed permeable pavers, which proved too costly. In place of that, provisions are included for cross-flow surface removal of stormwater. A vehicular accessible spine extension from the gathering area to access the lakefront eastwards. Next component, a small northern extension of the lakefront lawn to abut the gathering area. Next, addition of a concrete apron around the Jaro Park washroom concession building, and a multi-level composite deck to its south. Concessionary eating area east of the building. Universal access down to the washroom concession building from the park place, and access stairway down from the new Jaro parking lot. And trees and shrub plantings, tree grates, irrigation, decorative lighting with convenient power outlets, signage, and furniture. We should get the next one up. So, there's the concept there. So, there's the main part of the plaza. The existing large trees will be retained. There's the extension to it, which will take it out to the lakefront. Here's the existing concession building. Here, as far as proposal, is the eating area that would be associated with that building. There will be a universally accessible pathway, which will come down to concrete apron surrounding the concession building. And be another walkway, which comes down from the parking lot to the spa here. And in this area here, there would be a wooden type of deck, which would be shaded underneath the trees. The existing grass here, as I mentioned, would be pulled up a little bit. This area would be a little bit reduced from the existing parking lot, and the difference would be taken out by a little bit of extra grass. Total cost estimates for the Jaro Park Plaza works comes out to $609,996.75. And this significantly exceeds a construction budget of $294 that we'd set last year. But I should point out that that was not a cost estimate on our part. It was just what was allocated out of the budget. There are other ways that we can make up that money, which, if we get into that, I'll let the CEO talk to that. But the committee itself is a bit concerned about the budget. It's also concerned about getting all the work done in time for our season opening. So, in that kind of light, we include provisions for breaking down the phases of development. So, this one here could go this year, and this one here, the midpoint would be approximately here. It could be finished next year, if that was council's wishes. And also, as another option, which would save money, this area here, the seating and tables could be moved onto the wooden platform. And we could do away with that. That would be quite a substantial savings of $31,000. And there's another potential savings, too, in that that deck was designed to be made from composite deck construction. But if we went to wood, which probably would be more attractive, but would pose maintenance problems over the years. But the capital cost would be reduced by $34,000 on that. That's quite significant as well. So, we do have options in terms of saving costs and phasing out the development. So, are there any questions about Jaro Park before proceeding further here?
May I ask? It says that the originally proposed permeable pavers were, that idea was discarded. I thought the idea of having permeable pavers was that so it looked like more of a green space. Am I correct in that, or is it just one type of paver versus another?
It's one type of paver versus another, but it's also another type of subsurface construction. A lot of the work for permeable pavers is not in the more expensive paver itself, but it's in the base underneath, which allows for water to seep through the pavers and then go underneath and be carried away. And that's where a lot of the expensive work comes from. The original cost estimate, which we got from our landscape architects, showed that that was going to be quite expensive to do. And instead, they proposed that there could be a sufficient slope on the plaza. It does not have to be very much, which would allow a cross runoff. So, we go down to the area down here, which is grassed.
Okay. The other, sorry, the other question I had was concerning the seating area outside the concession. There already is a small seating area there. Is this an addition to?
This would be a more formal version of that, yes. It would just, it would elaborate on that. It would also involve some tree planting for shade. Something you're talking about, I believe you're talking about this here.
Yes.
So, yeah, so there would be more furniture there, and we'd be planting these six trees here, which, you know, all costs money. And it's very nice, but as I say, you do have the option, whether it be in the short term or in perpetuity, to meet the needs for people eating the food in the concession building here, to sit on tables and chairs with them, shade here. So, you do have that option.
Thank you.
If I could just add, I think initially, the concept we were looking at was a grass creeding concept that would give it a green look. But again, that was cost prohibitive because we were going to the, we would have to go, because we wanted the multipurpose function, we'd have to go to a very heavy grass creeding system, which was cost prohibitive, and also the drainage and things like that that went along with it.
So, I have a couple of questions on that.
Yes. Go ahead, Mayor Wells.
And that was my, thank you, and that was my question was, so it's not, we're not going to grass creating? This will just be a hard surface then?
Yeah, that's right. We looked at the, there was two steps in this thought process. And first of all, we looked at the grass creed. And the recommendation from our landscape architects was that in a very, very heavy-use area like this, especially when it's very warm in the summer, the concrete base that we'd have to use, couldn't use plaster because you need concrete to support the weight of all the vehicles. And it could really scorch the grass in the entrances in between. So, they didn't recommend that. Then we considered permeable pavers, and as I did mention, that would be at quite a cost. Now, we could, if council wanted to, we could return to that option. And of course, we're going to have a public open house, which I hope all of you will be attending. And certainly, you could be able to ask the landscape architects these questions at that time and get their far more professional information, far more professional information from them directly than how I'm passing an audit. I'm not a landscape architect, but I think I understand what they're saying. But you should verify from the horse's mouth exactly what the options are and the ramifications.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we throw out the grass creed, and we're not going to use the grass creed, and we're not going to use the permeable pavers, then we're talking concrete or asphalt?
No, we're still talking about pavers. So, they're just not permeable ones, but they will be arranged in a decorative pattern. We don't want to go back to, obviously, asphalt. That's what we have right there, and...
I was thinking that.
No, and then we, no. And then we, you know, we didn't want to have carved concrete either. I don't think that would be very appropriate in an area like that, which is pedestrian-oriented and supposed to be friendly and welcoming and more of a leisure kind of area than a downtown square. So, that's where we're at right now, but we can retrace our steps if council wishes and conserve some of the options that, in fact, were ruled out for cost reasons.
Okay, I have another question then. On the extension of the eating area at the concession stand now, the area that's there now, it would appear that that's tied into the concession itself. And first off, is that so? And then, secondly, would the new area be more easily identified as full-open to the public?
Yeah, that's a good question. And certainly, the dedicated area is completely intended to be used in conjunction with the concession itself, and it's right next to it. In terms of use of the wooden deck area, I mean, that's just as close. And I think certainly from the distribution of eating tables and so forth in that area, it would be obvious to everybody that that's what the purpose is, and it would be, I think, pretty closely as convenient as the other one. Some people might consider that the dedicated space, as was originally conceived, would be better. But it just comes down to a question of cost, either in terms of immediate cost or you could do it by phasing. You could put in the dedicated area later, if wanted, and just move the furniture across there.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mayor Wells, did you have something else?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead. We can't hear you.
I guess, so, okay, that's the eating area. Gee, it would be, I think it would be unfortunate if we had to move from composite materials to wood. I think we all know how deck weather in the Okanagan sun. And if it's going to be a high-use wood deck, gee, I kind of, I have to question that. I have to question that, whether that's the right decision.
Well, it's certainly council's choice. And, you know, we work with the consultants, and the original choice from our part was it was a composite, just for the reasons that you're talking about, high summer heat. You also got snow and ice and so forth in the wintertime. So, yeah, there's, obviously, a wooden deck would not last as long. Portions of it would have to be replaced from time to time. So, there'd be a maintenance issue there. It just comes in at less cost. But probably a composite, from my point of view, would be the best choice. But we wanted to make sure that we presented all options to council.
Well, again, it comes down to, you know, and we're, I know there's a large cost factor there, but I'm kind of a big believer in doing it right the first time. And, you know, again, wood decking, high traffic, and, you know, the shrinkage and some of the issues that affect wood. Gee, I think we should have another look at that issue.
Thank you. Mr. Remanko?
Yeah, that's kind of a good segue into the comments I wanted to make on financing. Just for clarification, that currently, all the funds associated with this particular project were identified out of the resort municipality funds. Just some insights into that program that, there are other projects that we could move money within our strategic plan to make this project more accessible in terms of funding. There's also some long-term funding in the strategy to fund waterfront improvements. So, although there's a lot of call on that, because there's a lot of projects that we have in mind for waterfront improvements, I just wanted to bring to council's attention something that was brought to my attention by the resort municipality staff the other day. And a large part of the resort municipality program philosophy is leveraging of other monies. And so, there's no community funds going into this project at all. We're all, you know, the community is hanging its hat on this resource funding, and we're not allocating at this particular point in time any additional community budget to the project in the long term. That leveraging of money will be an evaluative point of this particular resort municipality program. So, it's just a heads up that, you know, if this project, this major project, is going to go in the community, that potentially should be some, at least some consideration by council for local funding into the project.
And that will come up at the budget meeting?
Yes.
I know that councillor Rhodes was at a waterfront master plan or, you know, meeting recently. Is there anything that you could add that you had discussed at that? May I see the minutes are in the later on this afternoon? Is there anything that you'd like to add to this?
Well, thank you. Just for clarity, I think I go to all of them.
Yes, I'm sure you do. Waterfront Steering Committee is what I meant.
The only thing I'd like to add is that within the committee and the people that are sitting there right now, there is an understanding that there is the right way to do it. And, you know, that aspect of substituting the wood from the other material, there always is an understanding of the right way to do it and the longevity of it and that kind of thing. But, you know, that practicality and the harsh reality of life sometimes has to kick into these situations. And budget was a big thing. It was, there was kind of a consensus in the committee that we may have been biting off more than we can afford, that $600 and some odd thousand dollar thing. So, that's why we have the options. And there isn't one aspect of this whole report that's written in stone. There's been no decisions made. And these are options only for council's consideration and debate and finally making a decision about it. You know, if we had $2 or $3 million kicking around and could freely spend it on this project, we'd be all over it with, you know, the top end of everything. But, you know, sometimes in communities like ours, you just kind of have to draw back and look at what all your options are and move things around. And that's what this report is all about. I know that's kind of a, you know, a simplified, contemporary way of looking at it. But that's kind of where we're at with it right now. And, but my belief is, at the end of the day, we're going to have a great project down there that's an amenity that's going to be enjoyed by lots and lots of people over the long term. So, thanks for that opportunity.
Thank you. So, one of the things that still concerns me is the lack of the grass creed. So, I'm just wondering if there is any way to do a 50-50 share of it? Is there any possibility of doing? And I don't, I'm not asking you, Mr. Cunningham. I believe that this could probably be... And I don't, I'm not asking you, Mr. Cunningham, I believe that this could probably be asked of the consultants. But rather than just having the pavers there for the whole way, is there any way that it could be interspersed or adapted a little bit? And you know what? It may be that you can't do that because of the cost. I don't know. But could we ask that question?
We'll certainly ask them the cost. I had asked them in the summer vein whether we could have, in the pattern, we could have some permeable pavers in the pattern, some crisscross species, but we'll certainly ask them those other options.
Okay, so what we would like to do is confirm that there will be a public open house on February the sixth at 6:30 at the Sonora Center. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I just want to quickly go over the other projects as well.
Absolutely.
Because they'll be part of that presentation, and we can return to that.
Okay.
If you may.
I have a question, please?
Yes.
When we, when we look at what we're doing today, and then we're going to the public process, then we have to look at a bigger picture, because we're looking at some of the Fuji options also. So if we were looking at a lesser, a lesser package on the Fuji option, that may look at doing something different at the Gyro part of the program. Is that right?
Yeah, there are two different funds, but I get the point that you're saying if we save money in one, we may be able to direct that to the other. But that's a question I think should be taken up at the budget meeting. But there's certainly that option. But if you let me get into the other landscaping projects first, because we have budget restraints there depending on which options are selected.
Okay.
Right.
All righty. So if we can bring up the Marina parking lot. There'll be four of those. Is that the first one?
Two, three, four.
Four, okay. We go back to the first one? So there's four options of dealing with the slope above the Marina parking lot. And the actual treatment that we will eventually select is important for two reasons, obviously as static, but also it's quite a steep slope, particularly in certain parts of it. And so bank stabilization is an important consideration of whatever we do. The option, option one, which is the cheapest one, would just be for decorative stones put over the whole area. And they would probably have to be hand-placed, I think, because, and they couldn't be round, because there would always be the danger of them starting to roll down the slope. But the consultants have provided a cross figure of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-six on that. So if we move to the next option, that would include some shrub planting included in with the rocks, which would give it more stability, but that increases the price to fifty-five thousand five hundred. If we go to option three, which would be a full terrace wall with decorative rocks and shrub planting, which would be very secure and would look very nice, but it would also cost a lot of money too, at a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Option four, which we asked the consultant to add in, would be a dry land seed slope with shrub planting. So the idea behind that would be the grass would be all hydroseeded and shrubs planted in amongst it, which would, I think, give a very secure slope. We had asked through the committee that another option be looked at, which would have been partial terracing, just to put the terracing walls in the steepest slopes where they're most needed. But that would have only saved about twenty-five percent off the expensive option, so that was not pursued with. Any questions about that before I proceed? Because this is the next most expensive project after Gyro Park Plaza. Any questions at all about that?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mayor Wells.
Option one, on that decorative rock slope, there's a lot of different approaches to the decorative rock slope. And I've seen some very, very attractive large rock, which maybe you were hinting at, being hand-placed. So I've seen some very, very attractive large rock being used in some highway jobs and things like that. And then you can see other jobs that are of a lesser quality and lesser in the appealing category. So on that option one, would this be like a high-end, a high-end rock?
I don't think I'm able to ask your question right now, but I'll find out from the landscape architects what the specs would be of the actual rocks that they would use. And also, color would be an important issue. You wouldn't want to have light-colored rocks, because you're, if you're down at the bottom there and it's a natural basin, which would catch the sunlight. If they were a lighter color, I think you'd be able to fry eggs down there. So I'll certainly ascertain from the landscape architects as to the precise rock specifications that they're talking about.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess this was my question, that it was leading into using less money in one area and more money in the other area.
Right.
If we make those sort of choices. This area is sort of my front yard. And I think, I think just the rock could do a very, very good job without the terracing and without putting water that would be necessitated if we put in shrubs or planting or anything. It is a desert. It is dry land. I think we should be looking after our water resources. And you have to look at that whole slope area, is who's looking at it? Because you don't see it from the road, you don't see it from the houses, you don't see it from the condos that are on either side of where I live. And so what you're, the people that would really see, if you're going to spend a lot of money down there, would be the people with boat trailers. And I think that's sort of, you know, the last thing is, it is a parking lot that we're talking about. And the Sailing Club, they're going to do, I see some work being done around there. So I'm really quite interested in the rock portion of it and how, you know, to get that as attractive as it can be. And then maybe we don't have to do the irrigation and the shrubs and getting into higher maintenance and use that money in more of a people place.
Okay, well, we'll certainly ask the consultants to review that and be able to come to the public open meeting with more information to answer those concerns.
Thank you.
Any more questions about the Marina parking lot slope before I?
May I just ask, is there any irrigation in that area right now, Mr. Doucette? No, so there isn't. So that, absolutely, that was a really good point, that we may not. We don't have to put irrigation in, that's a plus.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just continue down with all the other projects and I'll just go through all of them, and then you can ask any questions at the end.
Councilor Rhodes had a question.
Okay.
Sorry, and I think it might be a rhetorical question, I think I know the answer already. The decorative rock slope with no plantings and no terracing, is it going to be stable? Is it, is it, there's no fear of getting washed out and washed down into the parking lot?
Well, I think that's a question which we have to absolutely confirm a hundred percent from the landscape architects. And I've asked them to, you know, look at the steepest area and see what the technical term is, what would be the maximum angle of repose for those kind of materials. But it will differ depending on the type of rocks you use. And you may, instead of round rocks, you may have to get into ones that are, have edges on them and come out of a quarry. So we're going to have to investigate that.
Yeah, I think that would be a fairly, a fairly important component of making a decision with this.
Right.
If it's not going to be stable and if there is a fear of it, you know, being washed in one of our, what used to be hundred-year storms that seem to happen every ten years now.
Right.
I'd sure like that reassurance that it would be stable and be able to withstand, you know, those worst-case scenarios.
Will do.
Okay.
Okay, proceeding ahead. Okay, and I'll just go through the rest of the projects, the fairly smaller ones, and I'll stop for questions at the end of that. Fuji Court slope is, is this area here? That's fairly simple-minded, but it's just bare soil right now and needs to be filled in primarily for static reasons. Consultants have proposed rock and shrub planting at sixteen thousand six hundred. If we go into the Marina parking lot itself, and we have these islands that have to be landscape, and then the Marina riparian area, the walkway which we have in there is not universally accessible and, as being pointed out by the study that was done subsequently and by active people in the community who are concerned about these issues, that that will not do for accessibility. So we have to, we have to change out the shale for something which is more accessible, such as compacted gravel. Cost for that would be seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety-five. And I should mention that the save time, the CEO is looking at a separate contract for taking those materials out right away so that they do not create any kind of conflict with the use of the Marina slips. We don't want to see that stuff sort of, you know, being put out on these road area here and causing problems to people using the Marina. So the CEO will be reporting back on that. The Sailing Club, decorative rock and tree planting both north and south to fill that area in. Gyro Park, parking lot islands, that can be shown on the original, we don't have to really go back to that. But that project is identified separately, but for convenience sake, it should be tended out at the same time as the Gyro Park landscaping, because the two projects are right next to each other. And possibly Gyro Park could be used as a staging area for materials for when they're building up the plaza. And then the last one, there's a separate concept plan for this, the Sheerdown slope, because it's private property. When the walkway was put along, it was left without any treatment at all. It would benefit from decorative shrub planting and also a fence at the bottom to stop people sort of trespassing and wearing down the slope. And the cost for that would be eighteen thousand. So depending on the options that are selected, the sum total of all these other projects could vary between one hundred and sixteen thousand and two hundred and twenty-eight. And this compares with the one fifty-six, which was originally budgeted, and that was derived from some very crude cost estimates on a basis of staff. So if you choose the lower-cost options, you come in below budget. If you go to the highest-cost ones, you come above budget. So that's a decision that council's going to have to make. So any questions on those other projects? Okay, so going into requests for direction, staff requests council's confirmation for the consultants to present all their graphics and cost estimates to a public open house at 6:30, February sixth to fourteenth, in the Sonora Center. Adversements will be placed on the ASOIA's Times and our website, and personal invitations will be sent to Gyro Park, Sheerak stakeholders. So the idea is to open it up 6:30, have a get-acquainted kind of session, people can just circulate around the designs and talk with the consultants. Then at seven o'clock, they will actually make a formal presentation and open it up to questions from the plenary group.
Thank you. And I'm assuming from your report that after that, at the same evening, that council will then be asked to confirm which projects they would like? Am I correct in that?
Yeah. What I, it doesn't have to be at the same meeting, but certainly would have to be within the next couple of following days, a special meeting for council to confirm exactly which projects that they want to proceed with and include the options and so forth. And because those are the things which the landscape architects are going to be writing up immediately in the tendering documents. And then proceeding to the actual tender process itself and inviting proposals. So we are a bit short of time, so we want to keep rolling on this as quickly as possible.
Thank you. So do I take, Mr. Romanco, that we're going to decide that before we go to the budget meeting on the eleventh?
Well, I think it'll be a pre-budget approval process, given that certainly on the Gyro Park project, it's, you know, at this particular point in time, it's resort municipality funding. It's not directly tied to any type of other direct budget implications unless council at some particular point in time wants to decide to add additional community funds to the project. But to meet the timelines of construction prior to the summer season, we'll be looking for pre-budget approval.
Thank you.
I just have a request, and I know it may sound like I'm repeating myself, but if we could have those architectural consultants, landscape consultants, I really think it's important we get the right breakdown on the rock. A, in response to Councilor Rhodes, A, the right type of rock that's there. And again, there are some examples of some quite striking applications of just rock on some of the new highway construction that's been going on. And I think we should have that, A, to see how good it can look, and B, to make sure it's structurally sound. And if they had that coming to the meeting, I think that would help us make some decisions on the Marina, which again, could overlay and have some effect on what we do at Gyro. So they're sort of all tied together.
It will be done.
Thank you.
And as a secondary item, because the next item on the agenda, I had the agenda on my laptop, and I couldn't see it on Granicus. But seeing as there's just the one item left on the agenda, I'm looking at everybody now at the council, it looks pretty good. It looks pretty good on Granicus, pretty good presentation.
Thank you. Councilor Rhodes?
Thank you. Mr. Romanco, the resort municipality funding, I think there's an understanding that it does not affect our budget, but I think it's important to repeat that we do have the option of using community funding as well. And at some point, are we going to see what those options might be in case we do decide to go with the deluxe version or upgrade something that, you know, would exhaust the resort municipality funding? I ask that only because there is some talk about, you know, the green aspect of it and maybe looking at, you know, and that all has an effect on the money that we spend from our resort municipality. So it would be nice to see where that funding would come from, if it actually did kick into a community, you know, drawing community funding into the project and that kind of thing. And maybe some limitations that we might have? I know that was a lot of words for a short question, but...
Well, I think the public open house is on the sixth. We have a budget meeting on the seventh, and we'll ensure that this project comes up for discussion on the seventh, so that, because I think our next budget meeting after that is not slated for, I can't, I think it's two weeks after that. So council will... So, council will have the opportunity to take a look at deciding what option they would like to fund, and then at that time decide whether, you know, they want to put additional community funds to it or just go strictly with the resort municipality funding. That would give us two weeks to, for the director of finance to redo any budget calculations that, or, you know, at the same time, we could take a look at what projects may drop off that would fund, to enable the funding of this particular project.
If I could just maybe elaborate on that a little bit. And I wanted to bring some of the feeling that we had in the committee to this as well in, in that, you know, making the decision about having a green perimeter or, or part of the pathway or any of those other variables could very, very easily kick us into that decision-making process. And I think it's always important to be objective about it because it may affect the, the end decision, you know, kicking once again, common sense and logic out the door. And you have to pay attention to, to the budget aspect of it. And, and, you know, sometimes dreams have to be brought back and into the reality of it. And, yeah, that's why I asked that question, because it can have a pretty, pretty harsh impact on the decision-making process. And I know in the committee for, we were somewhat conflicted with, you know, the deluxe version with the real version, you know, that kind of thing. So, it would nice to know, be nice to know what those options are.
Okay. Thank you. So, the next, the next thing is the February the sixth at six thirty. We will get some of those questions answered at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on our agenda is the local government elections reform. Mr Romanco.
Yeah. This was, there was some correspondence that was sent to council that we put on the agenda. Basically, the, the provincial government is looking at some elements of, of local government election reform, one of those being the expense limits. So, a white paper was developed and there's a call from the provincial government for providing either individual councillors' thoughts or council as a whole's perspective on this by January thirty-one. So, we just put it on the agenda in case council, in fact, wanted to have a council perspective presented to the provincial government.
I'll, I'll speak first. I did have a look at the, the questions that were asked in this letter from, it was the minister, Coralie Oakes. And one of them was, in your community, do you think the cost of campaigning is a deterrent to people considering running for office? And just from my point of view, I think that in a small community like this, that it is not a deterrent. I don't think that there is a huge cost to this. I'd also like to point out that I did hear one of the mayors further up the valley, a community similar to our size, he was elected and he spent zero. So, he was obviously well enough known in the community that he didn't have to, to spend any money. So, that was just, that's from my point of view. But, councillor Plante.
Yes. I guess we kind of had firsthand experience here at UBCM. The discussion was really amongst some Vancouver council and talking about some of the dollars that were being spent. So, the one that I look at is always the campaigning issues different from small communities to large communities. And I would say with capital letters, yes. Obviously, it is. And I, I always agree that there's no problem for us, probably in a small community, to put a, a limit. But, I think this goes back to some of those really hard discussions they're having in the, the big cities where they're putting advertisements and getting these big dollars coming from corporate side and, and how they're doing the elections there. So, I didn't really look at this as being an issue for our small community. Never hurts to have a dollar, dollar kind of to it, but I think this is really on those large communities. And again, watching that happen in UBCM was very interesting, how each council person actually went up to talk about some of the effects that this has. But, again, I, I don't see those effects really having any hold on our, our small community in our elections.
Thank you. Mayor Wells, did you wish to say anything on this matter?
Just following up what, what you had to say and what councillor Plante had to say, it's really not, it's really not for small-town rural councils, I don't think. And to make suggestions for how the big people operate, I don't think that's correct either. So, probably, you know, my recommendation would be that we just do, do nothing on this and, and let them iron it out. But, it certainly is, as councillor Plante said, it certainly is an issue with, with the, with the big city, with the big city councillors. Without limits, people are in there for, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And of course, once you hit that certain size, they're all running on a slate anyway, you know, the NPA or whatever they are down there, Vision Vancouver. And so, they're all running on slates and it's a huge amount of money, and it certainly needs to be addressed at that city level.
Thank you. So, can I suggest that we just accept it as correspondence?
Yes.
That, that's the way we would do it? Okay. Thank you very much. I would like to have a councillor or two councillors move that the, we adjourn the meeting. Councillor Rhodes, Plante, all in favor? Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.